Good evening, um, thank you to those who are taking time out of your busy evening to join me. Um, this is a town hall format um event. I hope it's um sort of gives you as much satisfaction as in the in-person town halls which you are all used to attending and I'm used to hosting um for my constituents after sessions so we can catch up with each other and I can um let you know the highlights of of what has happened. Um, many of you have been following my newsletters and I appreciate that, thank you very much. And you've been following the newspapers and the um current events. I am proud to say that Virginia um has acted on the issues of police reform and criminal justice reform. We really did pass a significant package that the governor signed, uh, he made a few amendments. But um, we, you know, we, we now have things such as uh mandatory uh de-escalation training. Um, we have a more uniform curriculum for police training throughout the Commonwealth which we didn't have before. We are banning no-knock warrants. Um, we are also banning um sex with uh uh an individual who happens to be in custody of um the police. I, we're one of the few states that did not have that ban on the books. We are um requiring local governments to come up with um different models of policing, uh, models that include using mental health workers. So we can really ensure um that situations where the conflict or crises has arisen because an individual um is suffering from uh a mental health issue or substance abuse issue or some other um uh situation that we can address that in a appropriate manner and not just with um the force of of um, you you know, um, a law and order model. So we're trying very hard to um ensure that the nature of policing changes in a way that develops more trust within the community. We um, we also I have uh strengthened the enabling legislation for localities to create um s- civilian review boards. Um, they could create them in the past, but they really didn't have the authority to do investigations or to go to a judge to um make a case to ask for a subpoena, to subpoena records and different pieces of evidence. So um, again, we're trying to bring more accountability and more transparency to policing. And I, you know, I'm most proud of um two bills that passed. We have a sentence credit bill which you know, for certain crimes uh recognizes the good behavior of prisoners and um and actually encourages prisoners to participate in all the education and training programs and and make better choices. So that was a, that was a great bill. It went through my uh rehab and social services committee, committee which I chair. And we also um Senator Morrissey passed a um a judge sentencing bill which it will be now the default if there is a jury trial unless um, the offender specifically asks for the jury to prov- to give the sentence. The judge will do the sentencing and that's a very big deal. Um, only four states in the uh entire uh country had um the default of jury sentencing rather than judge sentencing. And there seems to be a wide, wide um gap in terms of um punitive uh approaches. Jurys are far more punitive in their sentencing than judges. So this was a very big deal and we're, it was a last minute bill that got through, so that's a very rough draft of um what our police reform and criminal justice reform measures have been. I'm happy to take more questions. And I have been providing updated information in my um electronic newsletters. We of course worked on the budget uh this past session. Um, the governor needed to make some adjustments. We of course have had to spend uh state resources on uh COVID-related expenses. Um we were able, the state was able to purchase uh additional COVID tests. We have prioritized certain groups such as um uh patients and employees and assisted living facilities and in nursing homes. We are doing a good job with contact tracing. The governor is continuing to encourage individuals to wear masks and of course to uh socially distance and wash uh our hands frequently. So we have not rolled back any um, any of the current privileges, if you will, that the governor allowed us to do in the uh summer. But we are um, we are seeing an uptick in cases in the southwestern part of the state and we have to really uh be diligent uh because our hospital capacity in the southwestern part of the state is um is at full capacity and that, that is problematic. So um, we need to all be vigilant and um and take seriously this COVID um pandemic. The governor um took the advice of the General Assembly and we worked with him. He had some very good ideas as well. We put over two hundred and eighty-four million dollars into safety net programs such as rent relief, uh utility relief um and other things that really are important because people are suffering from um COVID-related unemployment and we wanted to ensure that we did not increase homelessness. So there in fact is a moratorium on evictions um through April and we have uh the governor added money to our rent relief program. In June, we put fifty million dollars in of CARES money. Then we added an additional twelve million and these dollars can be accessed by either um tenants or landlords. But there needs to be an agreement worked out on how rent will be addressed going forward and in certain cases uh back rent will be forgiven. So I think that's just really important and I wanna give a shout out to um the for- the um Virginia Poverty Law Center and um Voice, which is a a um multi-denominational faith-based group. They really worked very hard in getting support for this rent relief program and this um uh eh ban on evictions and I am very appreciative to have been able to, to be part of those conversations and to move the ball forward on that. We did uh implement utility relief um funding. So the utilities, the utility companies in Virginia cannot turn off um service for six- sixty days after the governor's emergency order ends. And right now, the governor's emergency order um, I believe has a June thirtieth twenty twenty-one date um and utilities would have to keep services running for sixty days after that. So um, we think that this is a really good thing. And again, we use some federal CARES money. Um, we had earlier passed dollars along to our localities. We know that they're suffering as well and uh I know many localities, Fairfax, Arlington and I'm not sure about Loudon, are are offering some support to their small businesses, which I think is great. We are working very hard in terms of providing support to small businesses, guidance on how to survive through the pandemic and um, you know, the Alcohol Beverage Control Authority. Again, that's an authority actually that um is under my the jurisdiction of my committee, Rehab and Social Services. Uh, we have, you know, extended the deadline for restaurants to renew their liquor licenses. We've allowed for the delivery of alcohol with takeout food orders. Um, so, and we recently during the special session passed legislation that took effect immediately, which would allow restaurants that are co-located together in a, you know, a strip eh uh mall area or on a, you know, an urban or suburban street. Um, there will be no limit um the number of times they can request a special event permit which would allow again seating to be outs- more seating to be outside and a couple of other privileges. So um patrons could float among restaurants uh as long as they had a certain wristband indicating that they had been um checked for age and um appropriateness to consume alcohol. We uh, the purpose of this is really to give our small businesses a little bit more um opportunity to, to draw customers in. Um we can help our businesses the best if we actually participate in wearing our face masks and um and do do social distancing. So we need to help everybody. We need to help each other and uh help our communities um get through this. The uh twenty twenty-one session will be starting um January, second Wednesday in January. It uh is our shorter session, uh forty-five days and um it will be conducted for the most part uh virtually. The senators will meet in person to conduct our senate business on the floor. Uh, but committees will be um televised virtually for participants and lobbyists and stakeholders. So that will be a very different venue than what we're used to and I think there's going to be a real um movement on the part of the senate to ask our senators to put in fewer bills and to ensure that the bills are straightforward and not terribly complicated because we will not be able to access um our stakeholders as quickly and easily as we usually do when we're going through legislation and changes are happening uh very quickly. Um, I see we have a lot of folks on the line. I'm happy to take any questions you all might have or cover a topic you think um I have not covered. Uh, I, one, one thing that might be of interest um and then I'll turn it over and I apologize for the uh delay. We did in the budget actually put enabling legislation in so it would take effect immediately, enabling legislation that better uh fleshes out how the redistricting commission will work. As you know, the, the bipartisan redistricting commission constitutional amendment passed. So now we need to implement that in time to draw the district lines um in twenty twenty-one. And we have to do it early enough so lawmakers um know what districts they're actually running in and they can, you know, start campaigning. So three things. We're in the enabling legislation that I think really addressed some of the concerns, made the major concerns that were raised by opponents to the amendment. Uh, w- w- we have specific language saying the commission much, must reflect the racial, gender, and geographic diversity of the Commonwealth. So that is now the law. Um, the if in fact the commission can ne- cannot reach an agreement on the maps or the General Assembly cannot reach an agreement and the issue goes to the Virginia Supreme Court. The constitutional amendment talks about a master um expert who would draw the, the map. Well, the enabling legislation says that there has to be a master expert representing a democratic view and one representing a Republican view and the two master experts have to work together to come up with a map that they present to the Supreme Court. And um, so I think that's a good, good compromise. Um, and the other part of the enabling legislation um is the uh leadership in the House and the Senate has, the constitutional amendment reads, will turn over a list of names to the panel of retired circuit court judges uh for consideration for appointments to the commission. There are eight citizen appointments in the, the panel of of retired circuit court judges would do the appointments. Uh, but there is now language in the enabling legislation saying that the leaders of um the House and Senate cannot be um part of the legislative delegation that's appointed. So that's, I think that, that's great too. Um, so I, I thank you all for whatever participation you eh you uh gave to making this past election work. Um, we had a record turnout. We had more Americans voting in this election than in our entire history. The proportion of Americans voting was the highest in a hundred years. Um, and certainly Virginia um was, was no different. We are very, very proud of the way things worked. And the access to voting was significantly improved in, in the twenty twenty session by the General Assembly because you all elected Democrats who cared about uh making it easy to vote. So we were able to do mail-in voting. We had drop boxes. Um, you know, a court had ruled that, that having that second signature on a absentee ballot was in fact an undue burden for the November election. So um, so we did well and I know many of you on this call volunteered to get out the vote. You worked as volunteers at the election offices. You were part of the entire wheel that enabled our election to come off so smoothly in Virginia. And I just think you deserve a round of applause. I'll be uh happy to take some questions and then I'll give you a little synopsis of where I think I will go um legislatively in terms of my agenda in the upcoming session. My aide says that um you must put your questions into the uh chat box. Oh, discuss open carry guns for how to prevent intimidation. Okay. Uh, and chokeholds by law enforcement. Okay, great questions. Um, thank you Bob for being on this call and and Bob is, is one of the state organizers for the coalition uh to prevent gun violence. So we're very happy to have you. And Bob's also a constituent. Um, we are uh looking at additional legislation to prevent open carry um in situations where individuals could be intimidated. Um, so we have to look at that. We um, we have to spend a little time looking at that. I believe that the authority we gave to local governments uh could include um the uh local ord- it could enable local ordinances to actually address pub- public spaces, public events and the fact that eh, you know, um open carry weapons that are used for purpose of intimidation could be banned. So we have to look at exactly how the language is going to be applied. But uh this past session, we did give local governments authority to pass gun safety ordinances um regulating the use, re- regulating in open carry policies in their public spaces. So we'll see how that goes, Bob. We may have to uh, we may have to make some tweaks. Uh, maybe we can get a, a statewide uh bill through. I don't don't think we're gonna be able to, to uh, to tackle um too many gun safety measures in this sm- in this very short session. But we're uh, we're certainly gonna be watching uh how our how the legislation that we passed in twenty twenty passed and we will be uh, you know, we'll be taking notes. Uh, chokeholds by law enforcement. We uh, we did ban cho- uh chokeholds, so um, I think we, the language reads um that they're banned unless there's an extreme uh situation where somebody's life is at stake. Um, so somebody, in other words, would, would uh could be fatally harmed. Um but other than that, we uh, that is not a practice that will be, that is sanctioned or would be sanctioned in the state of Virginia. Um. Okay, great. Um, great question. Can you please clarify what was decided about how Virginia police will interact with individuals? We are expecting uh the Virginia police to be going through additional training, um especially in the de-escalation area. Um, we have not mandated that Virginia police uh be accompanied by a mental health co-responder. That is not a mandate, but it is the direction that we are um requiring local governments to, to go through. So uh we have to um we have not yet gotten there with the Virginia police and we'll have to um um work again towards that goal. I, I think it's important to note that, you know, the Virginia police do a lot of highway patrol work. There's no question. But in some parts of our Commonwealth, the state police are actually, actually function has the local police. And in those areas where they're going on calls where, you know there, there, you know, disturbances of the peace, uh people are calling because somebody is, you know, having a uh is acting strangely in the middle of the street. There are domestic violence calls. You know, in those calls, the state police are working very closely with a local sheriff or um, or other support institutions in that jurisdiction. So um there is room for the state police to come up with memorandums of understanding to in, to, to bring in mental health services um in those localities. So um, we're gonna, we're gonna wait and see what happens. But I expect we'll have to be uh probably moving forward with some policy. I hope that answers your question. Okay, let me, um, are there other questions that individuals have? I just wanna say, you know, on um one of our big goals in the special session was to really start attacking, you know, racial inequities and, and all of our institutions. And the lawmakers are well aware that we made some progress, but we didn't make enough progress. And I just want the listeners to understand that, you know, this um goal towards coming up with a racially bi- with a racially neutral society that doesn't have racial biases, that treats everybody equally, that does provide equity in the allocation of resources is going to take time and it is going to be an ongoing effort. And I, and I just think we all need to acknowledge that. Uh, we should applaud the progress we've made and, and continue to uh, to commit towards the goal I just uh articulated. Um, there's a question. I would like to hear discussion about how gerrymandering amendment that just passed will actually avert politically uh directed districts. Well, you know, that's a good question. It's probably uh somebody who voted in opposition to the amendment and I, I appreciate the fact that good, you know, people very well intentioned were on different sides of that, that amendment question. Um, it, it is a bipartisan commission. So uh, so the hope is, is that the tension between the two parties will bring moderation. And the important thing is the commission has to operate in the open, in the sunshine. There are very uh rigorous uh transparency requirements that were actually in the constitutional amendment. So so the public will be able to see and hear all the deliberations of the commission. All minutes will be part of the public record. Um, and we think that this, this openness and this uh transparency requirement will uh get us to a place that is um, eh, you know, at least a bipartisan place that doesn't favor one party over the other. Um, and there's also language in the constitutional amendment which was reiterated in the enabling legislation that you know, all relevant federal and state laws related to um the drawing of districts have to be honored. Um, you know, the Voting Rights Act. The decisions that have been made by this, by the um passed the Supreme Court on the one man, one vote issue. Um, state decisions regarding um fairness and related to districts. So eh, we, you know, hopefully nothing's ever perfect and nothing the General Assembly would create is perfect. Uh but we hope that people of good intentions, of goodwill um will uh abide by the in, the overall intent of that uh commission's mission. At the end of the day, the, you know, the constitution delegates to lawmakers the responsibility for voting on the districts. So it's, you, you can't divert the responsibility of, of the General Assembly. The General Assembly ultimately makes the decision on the districts. But under the constitutional amendment, the General Assembly only gets an up or down vote. We can't amend what the um commission gives us. So I'm hoping that we all work together and um, you know, hold the uh commission accountable and hold the lawmakers accountable. Um, there was another question about uh map being drawn by one Dem and one Republican. Um, if in fact a decision cannot be made by the commission and uh there's a logjam, um, um, what the map would look like then, under the constitutional amendment. The map would go to the Supreme Court. The responsibility for drawing the map and maybe I didn't make myself clear. Um, the Republican master uh expert and a Democratic master expert have to court, have to work together to come up with one map that they present to the Supreme Court. Um, and I just wanna note that there's been a lot of history that judges have not shown a partisan inclination in reviewing um past cases. Gerrymandered, uh gerrymandering related cases. So um you know, well, we, we will see. Um let me move on to my next question and I, and I do appreciate whatever interest that uh my constituents have um in this area and I, and I think that your interest and your diligence will enable us to really make this uh constitutional amendment commission work. Um. What are your climate change environmental priorities for uh next session? Oh, two questions here. Um, I am working on a recycling bill with uh some interest groups that care very deeply about um sort of the clarity and, in the um the, the recycling bins and having clarity uh in, in uniformity throughout the Commonwealth. And I'm um working with Delegate Goditis on that. I um, last year I submitted a bill banning polystyrene um Materials in um, food that you would um, be carrying out, you know, from a restaurant. I, that bill got rolled into Senator Evans' bill, um, which did allow for. Local governments up in Planning District Eight, which is Northern Virginia, to apply a uh, plastic bag. Fee if individuals did not bring their own cloth bags. But my language on the polystyrene um, materials got removed from the bill that actually passed. So I'd like to work on that again, I don't know if um, I can get enough. Uh, consensus early on to get the bill through during this session. What are some of the other things? I wanna make sure the Chesapeake uh, funding, uh, clean water funding is, continues to be available. I also wanna make sure that our conservation, our land acquisition and conservation fund remains uh, well-funded. We will be looking at um, how successful the um. Green Economy Bill, um, the, the Clean Economy Bill, uh, which we passed in twenty twenty. We will see how successful that is. How much diversification Dominion Energy is actually um, implementing. I understand that Virginia will have a um, wind farm um. In, uh, off of our coast, so we are one of the few states that is moving forward with that. So. There will continue to be struggles, there's no, there's no question. But I think climate change is really important and I am very, very pleased with the. Outcome of the presidential election as it relates to climate change. What are the, let's see. Oh, the popular vote question came up and I, uh, I certainly would support a popular vote. Uh, bill if that were to come forward, for the, those of you who are unaware, it would. For states that agree to join this popular vote compact. Once a number of um, electoral votes have been reached. Um, then states can determine how they are going to allocate their electoral votes. So, I, I think we're reaching the point where, uh, you know, a popular vote is. Probably, is probably a um, more uh, appropriate. And a uh, more equitable way of having Americans have their voices heard. So we'll see what happens, um, a bill was introduced in the House, I think it was Delegate Levine. I believe Senator Evans introduced a bill in the Senate, but it did not come out of the Privileges and Elections Committee, so. I think we need to keep uh, keep talking about that. Oh, great question, uh, John McDermott, hi John, thank you for, for joining. Legislation passed, which specifically, and the governor signed it. Which specifically gives our Commonwealth attorneys the discretion now to, to drop a charge. Or, you know, go into a plea bargain, which, which, you know, they've had before. But um, I thought that this language was necessary and was very active in getting it passed. There was an editorial, two editorials in the Washington Post. They had to do with, both editorials had to do with um, a situation in Arlington County. Where our new Commonwealth attorney, who's doing a great job, um, by the way. So our new Commonwealth attorney was queried by uh, judges in Arlington about um. Why she dropped some charges or decided not to go forward uh, in prosecuting in certain cases. And um, she was expected to defend her decision and. That decision could potentially have been overturned by the judges. And um, I just don't think that's the way we wanna go. I just think our, you know, Miss Tafti. Who is, who is doing a great job in Arlington and um, also the City Falls Church. She, she just needs that discretion. And if she chooses to not prosecute uh, in a, an offender because. Because the crime was um, for whatever reason, the crime was, was uh, minor. The first time offender, a diversion program would, would be a better approach. I think um, uh, Parissa Tafti and others, other Commonwealth attorneys uh, need that flexibility. It's, it's really part of this whole approach to um. You know, thinking about rehabilitation and thinking about um, a different way of. Applying the criminal justice system, so. Oh, so would you support a moratorium on new fossil fuel infrastructure? I would be very interested in, in learning uh, more about this. I um, I could possibly uh, support a moratorium, I don't know where I am at this exact moment. But I would like to learn more and I'd like to see what other states have done, so um. And it's interesting, you worded it, so fossil fuel infrastructure, which is great. It's not just a more, it's not a moratorium on fossil fuels, a moratorium on the infrastructure. So um, I do not support expanding uh, fracking. And I um, I would like to talk more about this, so Shelley, if you wanna call me or get in touch with my office. We can certainly have a conversation. Okay, are there's other comments or topics that I should cover? I think next year I'm gonna continue to work on improving access and affordability to, for healthcare. This past year, um, I got a bill through which nobody expected me to get through. Cause it was um, it's very controversial or let's just say the interest, the stakeholder groups were very powerful. And I was able to ban surprise billing, which is a very big deal. Cause oftentimes you might go to an emergency room that's out of network. Or you may have an operation and one of the doctors is out of network. Say your anesthesiologist and has a patient. You're often given a very large bill that you simply cannot afford to pay. Because your insurance company did not have this doctor in its network. And what my bill does is it says that the doctor cannot contact the patient. If the doctor's out of network, the patient is not obligated to pay. So the patient won't be facing any uh, creditors or they won't be facing harassment. The doctor um, has to work with the patient's insurance company. And the insurance company in these cases would have to offer a customary and reasonable. Uh, payment to the doctor, if the doctor does not accept that, then it would go into arbitration. But um, but the, the patient would be removed from the financial obligation of this surprised bill. And I think that's a, that's a really important thing, I, I had a constituent who had such a huge bill. It almost sent them into bankruptcy. And um, and I just don't think that's, that's right. So, I was pleased to pass that bill, um, we'll see how it's implemented. And under my legislation, uh, self-insured um, organizations can opt in. Which, which I'm really excited about too, so next year I'm gonna be working on. How to establish a framework for a Virginia Cares Program, which would make an insurance option affordable. Uh, with some state subsidies for uh, you know, individuals. I'm not sure where I'm gonna put the threshold, but it could be as high as five hundred percent of the poverty level. Or um, or um, small employers. And um, and single proprietors, I want them to be able to afford insurance. And I'm doing research on what other states are doing. And we're going to establish a framework that I could move forward with. Um, certainly for twenty twenty-two, we'll have to create a, we'll have to do a lot of research on uh. On what the uh, plan would look like, but I am determined to um, to get every Virginian insured. Recently, Crystal Ball said that Virginia needs to work on expanding worker rights, what are your thoughts? That's really important, I, my, my focus right now is on improving the work environment. For workers and as you know, I've carried a paid sick day bill for, for um, two sessions now. I have worked with the Virginia Interfaith Center, they are incredibly devoted to this topic. And um, and I feel very strongly that. We have to create an environment where individuals are not choosing between feeding their families. And taking care of their health or taking their child to a doctor. Because they, they can't afford to lose a day of pay. I mean, that's, that's not helpful to anybody. And we have to, we have to place a higher value on our workers. So I'm really um, I'm really focused right now on trying to, to provide. Paid sick leave to our most vulnerable, you know, especially our, our um, personal care assistants. And others who really have no way of being able to um, articulate. Or, or um, present a case to their employer, so. Wish me luck on that, so that's, that's where I am at the moment, um, so we'll, we'll see how um, things. It's, it, you know, it's develop over this next session. I would say right now we're getting a lot of pushback too from small businesses. Um, they're barely holding on and most of our um. Employees in the state are employed with, by businesses with fifty employees or fewer. And that's the definition, federal definition of a small business, fifty employees or fewer. So um, so we're looking at the economics of our business community as well. But I, I do think that, you know, some worker protections need to be part of the conversation and. And we have to look at other tools, I don't know if there are tax credits or other things we can do to sort of um. Make the provision of, of um, worker protection things uh, more, more palatable to business. With all the new restrictions on hitting local charities hard, it would be useful if local governments had correct contact information. As many groups are having virtual events, oh, to try to fill the void. Absolutely, I, that's, that's a great point, um, I will pass that along to the um. Legislative liaisons and the different jurisdictions that I work with. And I will also mention it to the Virginia Association of Counties that. Um, and, and local governments wanna help their nonprofits, I mean, the nonprofits are providing a safety net for, for food security. For um, for housing grants, for um, you know, uh, childcare support. So, so local governments right now are trying to help their, their local um, nonprofit groups. And I think that they would very much want to know where the, you know, accurate information. I know Arlington does have a database. So if you contact um, probably the county board office in Arlington. And that's probably true with the other jurisdictions. And um, make sure that the information for whatever charity you're affiliated with is correct. I think the local governments would appreciate that. What are your thoughts about schools reopening soon? Well, that's a, that's quite a, quite a topic, um. We did provide um, an incredible increase about um. I wanna say. I wanna say about two hundred million to our schools through CARES Act dollars. To uh, enable the schools to prepare for reopening under COVID. And to also in the meanwhile, if the schools need to purchase uh, tablets for students. If they need to enter into more robust memorandums of understanding with broad, broadband providers. Uh, if teachers need to be trained, uh, we have provided funding to these, to school systems. You know, the reopening of schools is very much a, a local decision. But the plans to reopen must be approved by the state. So, you know, if schools can figure out how to bring students back even twice a week. In a socially distanced manner. And keep the teachers safe and the students safe, even if it's for a brief period of time. That may be worth pursuing, I know parents are struggling. Some parents actually do have to go back to work, they can't work from home. And even parents who are working from home need a break and um, and can't be, you know. Teachers the whole time or supervising their children the whole time because they need to be actually doing their work at home. So I, my position is I wanna provide as much support as possible to our local school districts. And our school board members. Um, they've got really, really challenging jobs right now. Uh, every parent is looking at this school decision from his or her own family need. And that's, that's great, that's fine, but um, but at some point, a policy is, has to be applied. Across the board and uh, and there are always people who agree with the policy, you know, there's people who don't. But I, I have been hearing that school systems are attempting to uh, to come back with some. Um, you know, very min- minimal phased in, uh, in school instruction. Are you worried about the financial integrity of the retirement system or our fiscal and budget future? Well, you know, surprisingly, um, Virginia's faring pretty well. When it comes to the fiscal stability, uh, we are fortunate, we have uh, a large percentage of our workforce. Is um, either employed by the federal government or on federal government contracts. And we have uh, avoided the ups and downs that go along with um. You know, economic uncertainty because the federal government is always around and contractors seem to always be needed. Um, I just got an update from the governor today, uh, has did other lawmakers and our. This quarter growth um, was down about two point seven percent. But, but overall, our economic growth um, has not really reduced. We've had a reduction in payroll taxes, but we've, we seem to be making up that reduction in sales taxes. So I guess a lot of Virginians are, are still shopping and they're shopping online and they're. They're paying sales tax, which is, uh, which is interesting, so um. And the alcohol, uh, uh, the consumption of alcohol and the, the tax on alcohol. Has really just soared, um, the first week that we were under a COVID. Stay-at-home order, which was between March twelfth and March nineteenth. Um, alcohol sales went up sixty-five percent over the same week last year. So it would have been the same week in uh, twenty nineteen. Um, and ever since then, every week we have had soaring alcohol sales, which is interesting. And, and um, as you know, Virginia is, the alcohol beverage system is a state agency. So the state does uh, garner a lot of money through the ABC sales. And what else can I say? And what else can I say, we um. You know, I continue to be worried about not having a second stimulus package, I hope we get another stimulus package. Our uh, you know, local governments are struggling, uh, our first responders need overtime. We did provide some hazard pay. For uh, personal care workers in the budget and um, nursing home assistance, but. You know, our hospitals are uh, are, are still struggling because. You know, COVID has just been a very challenging disease and. And we need to provide care to everyone and uh, and sometimes the care can be uh, costly and lengthy. And our um, you know, our hospital beds have really been taxed and there was a. A period of time where elective surgeries were prohibited cuz we need to insu- we needed to ensure capacity. Uh, bed capacity throughout our hospital system in the state, so hospitals have suffered and. And then our universities have suffered tremendously too, uh, enrollment has gone down. Um, at least somewhat, not, not by large amounts. For the public institutions, but it, but enrollment has gone down and universities have had to make huge shifts. Uh, there has been a cost to shifting to virtual learning, uh, but more importantly for students that have. Um, needed to or chosen to live on campus, universities have had the expense of keeping. Uh, dormitory rooms clean, of doing uh, regular testing of students, of ensuring that they have quarantine space. So that's been a challenge as well. I, I guess I'm really hoping that, that we get another stimulus package. All right, next question, I read in the Post that Virginia joined an interesting compact with Maryland and other states. To get better access to better and faster COVID tests. Oh, good, yeah, great question, um. We believe that the um, laboratories we have entered new agreements with. Will be able to turn around tests in an accurate fashion within um. Three days is what we're hearing, um, so. We're hoping that that is the case and I have been um, you know, monitoring. Sort of the reaction around the Commonwealth to the, the agreements with these new labs and so far people have said that. The turnaround has been much faster. And the accuracy is better and the tests are not as invasive, so um. So all of that is good because our easiest way to test is still these drive-through. Opportunities, which, you know, Virginia Hospital Center, I don't know if they're still running it, but right off of Quincy Street. Across from the old Education Center, Arlington Public School Education Center, they were running a drive-through. Opportunity and it was not limited to Arlington residents. Um, and they were able to do the nose swab and, and uh, and get accurate uh, test results in a timely fashion, so. You know, this is why elections matter. I mean, the lack of any kind of coordination on the federal level. Has just put so many states and so many Americans in jeopardy. Of um, not getting good testing, not getting, you know, adequate care in a timely fashion. And the contact tracing issue was a little late to, to get started, so. You know, absent a national strategy, tests were, I, I mean, states were competing with each other. You know, to buy PPE at a reasonable cost and then to intro, enter agreements with laboratories. Um, at a reasonable cost and, and so every state was sort of out on its own and, and there have been some regional compacts. That we think have been helpful. That's the, that's the best information I, I have, um. So I appreciate the question and, you know, I do think that there is light at the end of the tunnel, I don't wanna. Leave you on a um. Sort of a down note, um. You know Pfizer and uh, another major drug company has come up with, they believe a very effective vaccine. They're trying to get approval from FDA, I hope they have done all the requisite protocols and testing. And then the question will be how quickly can we disseminate and how easily can we disseminate this vaccine? Apparently the vaccine has to be kept uh, very, below freezing and very, very frigid. Environment which can be difficult if you're, you know, transporting the vaccine across the country, so. These are challenges, but they're not insurmountable and uh, and I am very hopeful that maybe by the spring. We will, you know, achieve. Much more progress in our um, fight against COVID. Any other questions? Oh, I'm going to conclude, I had booked this for an hour. And I really have been very delighted with your interest, I, if there's a topic I didn't cover, please let me know. In a, in addition to my healthcare proposals for next year, I will be um. I'll be working on um, some animal protection issues, I'll also be looking at um. Women's reproductive health and what the best strategy is forward on that topic, you. I don't have to tell you, you all are very engaged, but next year we have our gubernatorial races. And um, statewide races as well as the House of Delegates and. As always, these elections are important, but they're even more important now, especially given the. Composition of the US Supreme Court and the fact that access to reproductive healthcare is gonna fall to the states. So um, so we will have uh, our work cut out for us. Not that we're, we're up to it, I, I know you all on this call, you're uh, Energizer bunny, bunnies and you're. Smart, savvy people and care deeply about. You know, having a fair and progressive environment in our Commonwealth, so um, so. We don't get much of a rest here in Virginia, I, I, I'm gearing up for twenty twenty-one and in the meanwhile, I'll make calls to help our. Two Democratic Senate candidates in Georgia, so with that being said, I, I will conclude, um. If you want periodic updates, please sign up for my newsletter and you can do that by going to my website, Barbara Favola dot org. I suppose you all are already getting my emails because you got this link. But if you wanna share my website with a friend, that'd be great and um, look forward to staying connected, please stay safe. Uh, we are in this together and we will um, we will get out of this pandemic together. Thank you.